I'd like to invite, excuse me, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town Council Meeting Monday, October 21st, 2024, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chambers. Agenda item one, President of Allegiance.
I'd like to lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the reward which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, Roll Call.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Excused.
Counselor Shenyer.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow. Counselor Kelly.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Excused.
And Counselor Rivas.
Present.
Thank you.
We have a call. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Consider and Accept the Meeting Minutes of October 7th, 2024, Town Council.
So moved.
Second.
Urged by Shenyer, seconded by Daniels. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes of that meeting? If not, all in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, Subcommittee Report. Department of Public Works, Counselor Shenyer.
Uh, we didn't have anything, did we? No, no report, uh, it went to the General Gov, I think, or Planning Development.
Moving on to Education and Services, we have no report at this time. General Government.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Thru You. The General Government Committee met on Thursday, October 17th, at 7:00 PM in Gar Hall Office of Economic Development. Two agenda items were reviewed, discussed, and recommended for approval on tonight's agenda. In addition, we discussed a proposed draft bylaw on accessory dwelling units, which the Planning Board is working on. That was referred back to the Planning Board for additional, to complete their work on it and for legal review. We also discussed Charter, Charter Provision, Chapter 12, Section 5.3, which requires Southbridge, which requires a bylaws review the year following the report that was issued on the Charter review. So, given the Charter review was completed last year, it appears that we would need to do a bylaws review. The Charter requires the Chairman to appoint a five-member committee, and I think it was a sense of the General Government Committee that we should go forward with a bylaws review.
We will be talking about forming that committee, and I will be giving you a call.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Planning and Development, Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Thru You. We had a meeting last Thursday, October 17th, at 6:00 PM in the G A R Hall. Items 11 through 14 on tonight's agenda were discussed. We have a meeting again next Tuesday night, October 29th, at 6:00 PM. Tended to be scheduled for the G A R Hall as well.
Thank you. Moving on to Protections of Properties and Property, we have no report at this time. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, Chairman's Announcements. I would just like to announce that the Southbridge residents and veterans, Southbridge Veterans Day Ceremony, Monday, November 11th, 2024, 10:30, at the World War Memorial, right next to the fire station on Elm Street. Following that, the Veterans Day Celebration will be at the Wellsworth Hotel in Conference Center from 12 to 2:00. Registration is required, 508-764-5436, to register to attend the festivities. This time, I would just like to just make a couple of comments. I'd like to thank the Town Manager and DPW, along with the contractor that repaired the handicap access ramp. As we move forward for a study to look at the whole Town Hall, we still have to maintain a safe entrance for the handicap. I think it was a job well done. And we have one business in town, the Globe Sign Shop, received, it was a sidewalk that was so broken, and it's been there for years, and people tripped on it going into the business. I witnessed it, and I talked to the DPW and the Town Manager, and the business is very, very happy and satisfied that the customers can come in and out of the business safely with the brand-new sidewalk that is in front of their business. And he asked me to just say thank you to the DPW and to the Town Manager. That's it for Chairman's Announcements. We're moving on to Town Manager's Announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a number of announcements this evening. First off, for the Midtown Curbside Participants, curbside collection of yard waste will continue through November 30th, and will be picked up with your normal curbside collection. No plastic bags, please. The drop-off for the Southbridge residents at Department of Public Works will continue through November 30th, 2024. So, all curbside and the drop-off at the Department of Public Works will terminate as of November 30th, 2024, for the winter months. Early voting and absentee ballots, the early voting now continues through Friday, November 1st, 2024. The hours again will be during normal Town Hall hours. Saturday, October 26th, the hours will be from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The last day to register to vote is Saturday, October 26th, 2024. And again, to echo what the Town Council Chairman stated, thank you for the repair of the ramp so that we have handicapped access, because that did become a concern, not only for our handicapped access, but also through the absentee ballots. And it appears that we're very busy today with a lot of people coming into Town Hall to vote early. Halloween Activities, all are welcome to join for the Harbors Parade on Halloween Night, Thursday, October 31st. A parade will start on Elm Street outside of the Town Hall at 5:00 PM. The Fire Department will be used as the starting point. The parade will progress down Main Street to the Town Common, and Trick or Treatin' for Halloween will be from townwide from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM, and we hope we see you down at the Town Common. In regards to the Municipal Electric Aggregation Plan, we did receive the bids. We got a very good bid. The default rate for the program would be 13:040 cents, so 13 cents per kilowatt hour. We have contracted with Direct Energy for a period of 35 months. It's a great rate for us, and we are on program on target to commence in January, and we will be rolling out the educational program in the next several weeks on that. Just some announcements and some grants. I'd like to thank all our staff, Peg Dean, Rich Benoit, staff within the Town Hall, for the number of grants that we received in the last several weeks. The first one, Department of Energy Resources grant, the CDBG grant, this was extra money through the Department of Energy Resources. We received a grant for $68,997 to insulate, air sale, and add vents the attic at the police station. No cost, no match to the town. We received a fiscal year 25 Community One-Stop-for-Growth Grant of $50,000 for the Globe Village Mill Brownfield, so that is the mill building that we're currently in the process of tax title. So if we can get through the tax title and taking on that, we'll be able to do an assessment of the brownfield and move forward on that. We received a Green Community Competitive Grant through the Department of Energy Resources for $226,549. 159, approximately 159,000 will be for heat pump system and AHUs at the DPW. Some weatherization at Casbon Senior Center for 22,000. Some dampers at the Edwards Library for 20,000, and weather stripping at the DPW for another 20,000. So all that work within that is great for us. In fact, we have just finished the replacement of the two boilers down at the DPW, along with the heat control, so that building should be up to stuff when it comes to heating and weatherization, which is great for us. And those are at no cost to the town, so it's all grant money. We also received through the Mass Department of Transportation, the Municipal Pavement Program, which provides support to municipalities to improve the pavement condition of municipally-owned state-numbered routes. Each year, Mass DOT works closely with selected municipalities to develop an appropriate scope of work for an awarded roadway and oversees the project implementation. Mass DOT selects the roadway segments for improvement based on the pavement condition data that they have, the proportion of state routes in poor condition within a municipality, and geographic equity. They were pleased to inform us that based on these criteria, the fallen roadway segments in Southbridge have been selected to be improved during the FY 2025 program year. State Route 169 from mile marker zero to mile marker 3.1, and State Route 198 from mile marker zero to mile marker 3.6. These projects are funded through, the program advanced through the Mass DOT construction contracts in close coordination with the municipality. As such, no funds are provided directly to the municipality, no cost from the community, and we are not responsible for implementing the project. So that'll be a state DOT that will go in addition to all the other roadway projects that we have scheduled already, including River Crane and East Main Street. In regards to River Crane, I'm pleased to announce through the hard work of the DPW, the Water Department, and Peg Dean especially, Mass Works Infrastructure, we received the Phase Two of the River Crane Project for a grant from Mass Works in the amount of $2,700,000. That will allow us to complete the work from what is being completed to the bridge, and then from the bridge and the washout area all the way to Pleasant Street, and we are planning to do that. That, we're in design right now, but we're gonna accelerate that so we can go out to bid. We received a very favorable bid for the River Crane Project that was, came in under budget. We're evaluating those cranes, and we, those bids, and the most responsible bidder at this point is Amarillo Construction, who had bid on our East Main Street project. So, we are in very good shape when it comes to the bidding of these projects and moving forward, and hopefully when we get that bid out, it'll be even more favorable, because companies will be already mobilized in the town of Southbridge for that. So that's exciting stuff for us. I've received many complaints about solicitation for solar throughout town. It came up at a meeting that we had the other evening, and I can confirm that there is a solar company that has been solicited, residents in town, Trinity Solar, because they came to my house while I was at home as well, claiming that they were contracted by the town and were working on behalf of the town, and that is not the case. We do not have any solar company working on behalf of the town. We have filed a complaint with that solar company, and they are working to make sure that their employees are no longer conveying that they are working for the town. We do not have any employees working on behalf of the town for either Mass Save right now or the Trinity Solar. However, there is a grant opportunity that we will discuss later on, but at this time, no solar company is engaged by the town of Southbridge. This week is Red Ribbon Week. It's celebrated annually, October 23rd to the 31st. This has always been a project of the Town Manager Substance Abuse Council. Unfortunately, I think this year we haven't really gotten off on that, because we've been revamping our funding mechanisms with the opioid money, and now that we have that all in place. But we do have a very robust committee that is working forward. Counselor Rivas attends as part of that, chaired by Deputy Chief Hewlock. And Red Ribbon Week highlights the importance of living a drug-free life. It presents an opportunity for parents, educators, and communities to reinforce the drug-free messages they share with their children throughout the year. During Red Ribbon Week, youth and adults around the nation pledge to increase their knowledge by learning more about the destructive effects of drug abuse, including prescription drug misuse, and renew their commitment to live a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. We certainly support that here in the town of Southbridge and through the Town Manager's Substance Abuse Council that was started by former Town Manager Ron St. Angelo, and we do have quite a variety of individuals committed to the town in a variety of fashions. And quite honestly, when we sat on the opioid use of funds for the town, we learned that we could have probably been one of the presenters of what we were doing in town, because we are ahead of the game. So we look forward to moving forward in that regard. Just two more things. On Monday, October 28th, we'll have the joint meeting with the School Committee. We got in the presentation by context, architecture, school district master plan, we got in the facilities. That meeting is scheduled here in the Council Chambers at 6:00 PM. We look forward to working with our partners in the School Committee. Just one thing that I do want to echo, there's a lot said about relationship between town and school and how we operate. I just want to say, on the town side, working in the municipal finances with the school district and the human resources, and our maintenance departments, we have very good relationships with those departments. Over the last couple of weeks, we've had some very good meetings with the School Department, Finance Department, Bill Metzger. They are transitioning from their hired company that has been managing the town, oh, the school finances, and transitioning it to local control of town finances, which is a great first step. We are working very closely with Bill, my finance team, and their finance team, and they have a liaison that's working with Open Architects that is assisting with that. This individual had been the Chief Financial Officer for the City of Springfield, who had a lot of experience with Munis. We've had communications with each other and how we could collaborate in regards to our chart of accounts transition. Very good meeting today where they will assist and align their Department of Elementary and Secondary Education accounts, Munis accounts, with our Munis accounts, and they'll be able to work on that transition with the monies from both the school side and town side, pending Dr. Volar's approval on working collaboratively, and I believe we will do that. But it's an exciting time on both ends when it comes to that issue, because we are working collaboratively, and it's great, as we work through the budget season, to work how to develop local budgets and the management between our accounting and their accounting. So it's an exciting time, and there's a lot of energy on both sides to make sure that this works together, and I look forward to working with them in that regard. And that is all I have tonight. I know I was rather long-winded, but there's a lot of things going on in the town, a lot of activities, a lot of great projects, and it's gonna be a busy time throughout the winter, so.
Job well done. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Presentations, White Paper Services.
Could you please pull that microphone towards you, announce who you are? My name is Christopher Morgan, co-founder of White Paper Strategies, Almost Services. We can all take that name consideration change. It's no problem. It's no problem. And so, what I'd like to do today, if it would please the Council, just go through a little bit of a summary of what we do, where we are right now in Southbridge, and what we plan on doing over the next couple of years. Thank you, Peg. And thank you, Peg, for inviting me tonight. So, we are a small, privately-owned real estate investment company that also has a property management arm associated with it, which is all in-house. So, we're not a third-party property manager. We just manage our own properties, of which, currently there are about 300. We started in 2017. I'm from Framingham area of Massachusetts. My partner, who's unfortunately not be able to hear tonight, is from Milford, so we consider ourselves fairly local. We started this company in Worcester, municipality of Worcester, and what we tried to do, the purpose of this was try to put a little bit of a dent in what is becoming a very obvious housing crisis in this country, let alone the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And instead of going through the trouble, because we didn't have much money at the time, of building net new, taking out construction loans, we would go find, let's say, distressed buildings, mismanaged, dilapidated, so on, where you wouldn't necessarily have to add density, you just had to bring unoccupied units on market, which has a litany of challenges to it, both internal work, external work to the structures, foundational roofs, the whole nine yards. But coming from a development background in Boston, it seems like 20 years ago, because it was, the red tape is significant when it comes to getting entitlements to building net new buildings on vacant land, or even adding density to existing structures, in Suffolk County at least. And so, what we decided to do was go to existing buildings, primarily in Worcester, not necessarily in bad neighborhoods, but the buildings themselves were in bad shape. The tougher the better, because we could afford it at the time, and renovate it without going to the city desk for additional entitlements as to new density or new additions. And so it's all sort of intramural, the work we would do for existing buildings. So, where do we do this stuff? It's primarily Worcester County. Exclusively started Worcester, went up to Gardner, Leominster, a few other municipalities. Now a little bit in Northbridge, Uxbridge, and here in Southbridge. So, two years ago, we opened our property management office, 395 Main Street, so just down the street from here. And so that's where our company sits. And we're generally out in the world trying to find these buildings and renovate them, but our property management team is very local, so I'm glad you gave me the opportunity to come introduce myself. And so how do we do what we're doing? So we try to identify small and medium-sized multifamily buildings, which, luck would have it, is what was built in Massachusetts, you know, 100 years ago, turn of the century. There's not a lot of 200-unit buildings that are 75 years old. We have some of them now. We have a collection of these small portfolio multis, which Southbridge has a lot of. I'm gonna get to that zoning here in a second. But once acquiring that building, and I'm not saying all of them are mismanaged, that's unfair. Some of them are very well-managed, it's just that owner's probably maybe at the end of his career or her career, and want to move on. And so that's actually the experience we've had in Southbridge primarily. In Worcester, it's a little bit of a different story. Sorry, Worcester. But we would acquire the building, action the renovations, and then I think the most important part of this is re-tenant the building with what I'll call gainfully-employed, safe, responsible tenants. Not trying to disparage any tenants anywhere, but there are some good and there are some bad, of course. And what we have seen, without a doubt, is there are a few bad apples that will spoil the bunch. And how we've approached this, since we're small, we're growing fairly slowly, is an in-depth criminal background. All new tenant applications, you have to be employed in some capacity, work with a lot of housing authorities, but you can have no previous evictions on your record, which we have found, if you do that work upfront, it saves a lot of time and a lot of money and headache and heartache down the road. It's exceedingly expensive to evict people. We're not in the eviction business, but we want to build a company that has sort of a, it's good tenants in, good tenants out, good experience for everybody from the beginning. And then we continue to do that as we grow. And so this is an exceedingly small graphic, so I'll read it out loud, because I can't even read it, and I'm sitting right in front of the computer. Before going into new municipalities, we like to look at what I'll call sort of macroeconomic vectors, and Southbridge has some really, really good ones. So this data is from 2022. So this represents a change from 2021 to 2022. And so, just some of the broad strokes, they're all good, but some are more prolific than the other. 11% decrease in poverty, almost 9.5 increase in household median income, 15% increase median property value, that's massive in my business, and 5% decrease in age, which really isn't good one way or the other, but it might be worth calling out, because it seems that Southbridge is getting a little bit younger, with younger families. At least that's what we're seeing in our buildings, which we'll get to in a second. And so I feel like that is worth discussing, because that's all great news. Now this is datausa.com, so I believe they come out every two years, so we're ready for a new one, but it takes some time for them to essentially interpret and produce the data from '24. So, I feel like it's gonna continuously be, you know, positive when it needs to be negative when it needs to be, but I think this is worth talking about, so I think everyone is doing a great job in the town, because here we are, the numbers, you can't fudge those. Going back to just central Massachusetts in general, why we started here, I'm from here. Worcester was sort of, it's the second-largest city in New England, as we all know, but we're seeing this migration, not necessarily even from Boston, through the Mass Pike to Worcester, but even within like 495 Belt, let's say, to Worcester, then even further south, or in this case, southeast, towns like Southbridge, Uxbridge, Grafton. People are keeping their jobs, which is in and around Worcester, MSA, but moving out for, I guess the fear of having a few extra miles to go to work is no longer a huge fear, and I think that's, it's a push and pull. I think that it's, this housing crisis is getting a little ridiculous for everybody, and sometimes there's just an affordability issue, which is, I feel like is felt by everybody who lives in the Commonwealth, particularly myself, as it is. But one thing I was talking to Peg about when she invited me to come speak in front of the Council is the what I'll call practical zoning, or common sense zoning. And so there's four zones, what I'll call multi-friendly zones, and from what I know, and I could be wrong, happens all the time, R3, RB, retail business, general business in the central core. And so you can have multifamily units in all four of those, and you can, this is just a snapshot of the GIS, but there's a lot of inventory here that was built way back when, and it still exists. I know zoning has changed all the time, and some's grandfathered and some's not, but having common sense zoning when you have a shortage of homes, I think, is an excellent vector, and this is why we love Southbridge. Hopefully that's considered in the next master plan, which I want to touch on in a second, but that is one of the major reasons that we came into the municipality. And actually, I'll go back for a second. So particularly in the central core, I know in the master plan, we want to focus on central core with first-floor retail, and then perhaps some units on second and third levels. That would be excellent, if we could make that process as streamlined as possible. That's why I feel like, when I was in the development business, that took a tremendous amount of time. Again, this is Boston, I know it's probably one of the worst in the country to get anything done, but having a common sense approach, whether it's a reuse, or some variance, or special permit, I think that would help a lot of other people become interested in investing, particularly in the city center, or city central core, excuse me. And so this, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't share, this is not any building in Southbridge, but I chose these photos because it exhibits somewhat dramatically the buildings that we started on buying, what they looked like, and then what they would become. This is in Worcester. This building, when we purchased it, I think it had 14% occupancy, it was 45 units. That's not a lot of people, and it was mismanaged, obviously. Essentially, the owner ran out of money and had to walk away, and unfortunately for him, fortunately for us, we were able to do the, execute the effort and do the work, and it's expensive, but a lot of people don't want to do that. They want to let that building die on the vine, and here we are back at the housing crisis that we started at. So this is the stuff that we used to do, we still do, and we're comfortable doing. And this is what it looks like after. So this, again, is a dramatic shift, but this would be everything, flooring, paint, appliances, systems, lighting, the whole nine yards. That, believe it or not, to rent that versus to rent this was not, I think it was $200 difference, believe it or not. And he just didn't even want to do it. It's, I think it was a little bit lazy, more than anything. And so, long story short, what do we want to do in the municipality? I want to continue doing what we're doing. Right now, we're at 124 units in Southbridge, across three different properties, and the idea is to continue to grow. And like I said, I'm not disparaging any building owners in Southbridge, because I don't know many, but the buildings that we have acquired were not even close to that. I just want to keep that in mind. This is, this was a special, a special event. However, we do all realize that part of your master plan is, another thing, the three tenants here that I included, first one being Reserve Historical Heritage, of course, that's a, it's a great idea. The downtown, the quaintness of all, many New England, not all, downtowns are just that. We do need to protect that historical, I would say, uniqueness, the architecture, the whole, you could maybe do an adaptive reuse, which we've done a couple times before, but we're not trying to, you know, make white hardy board block buildings, like, you know, in South Boston, for example, that's not the idea. There are many buildings, including churches, that we've seen, you know, nursing homes in a few municipalities, that you can do an historical reuse. It's exceedingly expensive, but I feel like when towns and cities want to work with you, it's 100% possible. And I think it's something we should consider here, because I did read the 2013 master plan, it was very well-done, by the way, and that was one of the things that rang true with me. And then second, improving the neighborhoods. Landlords is a bad word, which unfortunately it shouldn't be, but I get why it is, but landlords and renters who do not maintain their properties. So if you're a bad landlord, shouldn't be surprised you're gonna be, you know, you're gonna have bad renters. It's a two-way street, and we've seen this a lot, it's why we got into this business, because we felt like we could do it a little bit better than some of our peers. And so having that sort of constant communication and decent relationship, call me crazy. call me crazy, with your tenants, it's a force multiplier. It's a one plus one is three, in my opinion. And so, identifying, maybe we can work together, what buildings, particular blocks of particular streets, that are, you know, with hot-button issues, I'd be happy to have that conversation, if they are for sale, for example. If not, that's only so much I can do. And then, at the risk of, you know, sounding repetitive, investing in the downtown commercial courts, since the history of this town is pretty special, and I think bringing back particularly the retail aspect of that downtown stretch would be tremendous. And we have seven retail, what I call storefronts on it, but units on that street, and we only have one vacancy. And so, I'm wondering why those other landlords are having such difficulty putting businesses in those stalls. And I don't necessarily know why, because I see what they're being asked to rent, they're asking price for their per-square-foot rent, and I'm not sure what the problem is, but we're going to continue to invest whenever possible in that downtown block, because we just see it, a ton of upside. It's just, it's a very pretty part of this town. And then, I mean, finally, maintaining open and regular discussions with, you know, gentlemen and ladies like yourselves, and taking any guidance, I realize I'm not from Southbridge, but I'm not, you know, too far away, on what you'd like to see as the next master plan comes out, and see what, if we can, work together in some capacity, particularly with keeping to the zoning, allowing for multifamily buildings to be built, or, you know, perhaps even adaptive reuse of other use cases through special permit. We're not afraid of that, but that would be something that I'd love to have more conversation about, if at all possible. And that was it for the slides, but if there's any questions, please, let me know. And I can try to answer them.
Counselor Shinia?
Is to highlight the properties that you own?
Okay.
No, that's okay. Would the council like to know which properties he owns? I think that might help with context.
Yes.
I think I know. Well, does any council, I know where they are.
I don't.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Counselor Reavis, did you say you wanted to know where they are?
Yeah.
Could you tell us where these properties are?
Yes, absolutely.
And then we'll go to Counselor Shinia.
It's, um...
It's my phone.
So we have 37th Central Street, which, right now, currently, thank you, we're working on getting sprinklers on the first floor. It used to be a restaurant years ago, and it's, it's becoming a little bit difficult, because we have, I forget, this is touchscreen, this is great, there it is.
Yeah, 37th and 35th.
I guess there's a hydraulic pressure issue up the street. We'd have to borrow from Main Street, I think, so my business partner, who's leading that effort, has, exactly, has indicated. It's 395 Main.
And for the water pressure issue there, that will be addressed, that will be addressed through the TIP project next year, when they come through to do the water with the TIP project. It will connect Central right to Main, and will allow for the pressure that he needs through TIP funding.
Oh, great, all right, that's...
I wish it were sooner.
No, it's on the docket, that's excellent. And so this was our first building that purchased, 295 Main, this is about two years ago. And, this is a collection of studios, and it's an interesting building. I know the history of it, and the amount of work that went into it has been compelling. We've continued that work, but this was really, a few slides back, that third point, which was getting tenancy that I believe was a more cohesive, there was, there was some misalignment in the tenants that were in that building for a little bit. And now there is not. And I think, once that work, which takes some time, occurs, I think the overall health of that building is five X what it used to be, in my opinion. And then, let's see, the other one's, yes, that's, this is our one vacant retail, right on the corner. And, so this is 344 Main, another great building. The whole thing has been redone, top to bottom. Excellent experience with this building so far, but we just can't get that last stall leased, which I believe is only a matter of time, but we're seriously working on that. And then Oliver and Hamilton is a collection of four buildings, call them sister buildings, they're very similar-looking. They comprise 50, five-zero, units. And this building was in incredible shape. Really incredible, incredible shape. Nope. So it's kind of a, 57, Hamilton, that might be the one?
47, oh, 47, okay.
It's got a lot of addresses. I'm sorry, 57 Oliver, that's, that's what's, it's like six or seven different addresses, but...
Yep.
Could you, Oliver?
Oh, I'm sorry.
57 Oliver, right around the corner of those two. This building was in incredible shape, it just, the seller was ready to move on. So this actually is somewhat of an outlier to our normal business plan. And sometimes you can't find it on this, I know.
No, that's okay.
It exists.
And we don't have to show it, that's okay. I don't want to hold up the presentation.
It's all right. But, yeah, so, it's not a massive portfolio, we're very proud of it, we've worked very hard on it, and I think it's a net positive to the municipality. It's all in, it's about, it's 124 units, and all legal, all have certificates of occupancy. And, you know, there's, we're an above-board organization, we continue to be, which is why I wanted to come tonight and introduce myself. So, if there are any que, that's not it, right there. That's weird, it's not showing up, huh?
How recently did you purchase? Your sister's database may not have been updated yet.
Eight months ago?
Oh, no, that could be it. Okay, let's talk more.
In any case, but yes, thank you, grab me. If there are any questions, if I can help answer, please.
Thank you. First off, I want to tell you that I appreciate what your company doing. But, not a reflection of your company, the issue that I have as a counselor is the fact that, with your own presentation, you talked that you want to bring higher-income renters to the community or to your properties. The concern that I have as a counselor is, by doing that, we're moving out low-income people, people that maybe can't afford the rents that particularly could be increased. And I'll give you an example where I live. I live at Lebanon Hill Housing, which is a predominantly elderly complex that was sold last year for $7.1 million, and that's in the process of going up for sale and being sold again. To a point where, to make back your money, when you have a property that could be going for $10 million, rents are going to be increased, and you're going to take that elderly population and force them either out, or force them to live with family, or become a homeless population, increasing homeless population. And those are the concerns I have. I'm more than willing to work with you, with any company that comes here and wants to develop better housing, but my concern is, by doing this, are we going to create a vacuum and put the disadvantage out on the street? So, if I may, do you have a plan for a population such as the elderly, or the low-income?
Well, we do, absolutely. And so, we tether all of our rents to the HUD FMR. It's, when we say higher earners, it's higher than zero in a lot of these scenarios. And this is sort of, it's not necessarily Southbridge true, but it's the rest of the municipalities we plan true. We will find buildings that have, let's say it has 12 units, two of them have tenants in, because the other 10 have been ignored for 10 years, and there's no floors in some of them. That is the business that we're in. It's not displacing people that are already existing in the buildings, predominantly. So, for example, 37th Central, that was, I think, 50% occupancy when we bought it. So we're adding units, and they're always going tethered to the SAF Mar, so the Small Area Fair Market Value, of rents, which is tied to the 40th percentile of income per zip code. So that's what we're focusing on. When I say workforce and higher, it is, is low as a Section 8 would then reimburse a particular voucher holder for that unit, whether it's Studio 1 or 2. So it's not, we're not trying to remove people. If anything, we're trying to go and take buildings that are so underduressed that they can't even have 100% occupancy, because there's no water heaters, or there's no furnace, or something like that. Those are the buildings that we really like to attack. And so, those exist, more than we would like to admit. So I'm not trying to go in and kick people out and raise the rents and not do anything. We're just trying to get livable units, first and foremost. That's our goal. We want to add units, not make them more expensive. So that's kind of our approach.
If I may continue, well, not so much your company, but we recently had a low-income area of the community that was bought up by people that had much more money to spend than I would. And people's rent, I got phone calls from numerous amount of people that saw their rent go up as high as $1,000 over what they were paying. And I understand they weren't paying a market rate to begin with, and they had probably substandard housing. But, I just hate to see a continuing expansion of housing pushing the low-income and making people potentially homeless. That's the issue that I have. And I hope that your company would work with the community, and maybe apply for Section 8 housing or vouchers. Not so much vouchers, because those things, there's 12,000 people on a waiting list for Section 8 housing in Massachusetts, but a company such as yours can apply for subsidies to continue with the elderly population or the poor people. And I would hope that you would utilize that strategy also to help those kind of people.
Oh, absolutely. It's a very fair point. We are primarily a, just to do a quick background on, and we'll buy a struggling building, again, this is sort of unique to Southbridge. Let's say in Worcester, we've done a lot more in Worcester, where it's almost going to be condemned and knocked down, but you can't knock it down, because it's a historical building, for example. This did happen, 17 Chandler Street in Worcester. And, why didn't you ever knock it down? Because they can't even vote to knock it down. So now you have this building that's been an eyesore for 30 years, that hasn't had more than 25% occupancy in it. And that, that is what we, why we started this company, is to bring those buildings back to life. Now, that comes with a whole host of other problems, as far as bringing, working with housing authorities. Some of the housing authorities don't want to even go to those buildings. And so, I totally agree with you, and that's kind of why we started. So, we are, we're saying the same thing, I think, perhaps my delivery was incorrect on that, but yeah, that is not our vector, is to remove people and put them out on the street at all. It's actually to rehab some of the buildings that no one wants to touch, because it doesn't look like a good investment. We want those buildings, the ones that other people won't touch. That's the business that we're really in. At least that's the one we're trying to be in.
And I thank you for that. And me, as a counselor, I would hope that we would work with you to...
Absolutely.
Especially our core district, and those kind of things. But again, thank you for coming tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Reavis?
So, a little bit along the same lines, I just have some questions about how many occupants were in each of these properties? And have any of them been displaced? I know you mentioned people would have quarries and not have previous evictions. Like, how many people were evicted based on those criteria?
Well, none, that if the, when we bought the building, we wouldn't base, you can't do that. But, the only people, the one that comes to mind would be Whitford, whereas the amount of, we'll say, legal paraphernalia we found in those buildings were the people that got evicted.
Okay.
So the exact number, I can't answer, which my partner was here, he could answer that. But, for example, in Oliver and Hamilton, I don't think we've, I think we've evicted anybody. It's just, we try to do work on the outside of the structure first, particularly if it's a well-functioning building, which that one is. But, not all of them are, not all of them are. So the strategy has to change a little bit, depending on the building, but I think the biggest change, our success story, if there was one, would be the Whitford, right downtown. And I hope that can be seen walking around down there. Maybe, maybe not, maybe I'm too positive about it, but that's the only time you would evict somebody, if it's bad like that. And it risks other tenants, which does happen, more than we'd like to admit, unfortunately.
And then my other question on, and I do agree, there are some buildings where, have been so neglected, that, you know, that tenants that do live there are sort, it's a safety issue for them.
Sometimes.
And as far as, when you've gone into a building and there are tenants, what is sort of like, you know, the information or lead time for them to know, you know, about these new improvements, and about possibly maybe like rent being increased, or things like that? What does that look like?
Yeah, I hate using this answer, but it kind of depends. So if they're a good tenant, and we just need to do work on the unit, we'll just move them to another unit in the building that's in better shape, because they really are, it's a mosaic of quality. Some are in great shape, generally speaking, by virtue of how good the tenant is, but sometimes it's the landlord's fault. I would, it's 50/50, let's be fair. And so if they're a good tenant, yeah, we're, sometimes there's no increase in rent, we just have to do the work, because it won't pass a Section 8 inspection. And it's how they still, unless they come in there, which they have to do every single time. And that's what breaks my heart a little bit, is it's a lot of neglect, where it gets dangerous, gets, particularly the kids and so on. And so, we can move them intramurally, but if they're a bad tenant, and then we also need to do, you know, the renovations, let's say, we have to wait for the lease to expire. And generally, you give a 60-day notice to quit. And then they'll move on, or they won't. And if they don't, which they generally always do, 90% of the time, then you have to evict. No one wants to do that, because it costs everybody money and stress. So, it's generally 60 days after their lease expires.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Mark Eddy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So how much are you planning on charging for rent?
Whatever the Section 8 numbers is, it actually went down this year, 24 to 25, it decreased, which is bizarre. But, broad strokes, to answer your question, I think it's 11 for a 1, 13 for a 2, and a, I think it's 16 for a 3, 1620 for a 3, something like that. And so, yeah, I mean, it's, I feel like it, I feel like it's exceedingly fair, and even, some of my other peers in this business will not be, they will not be so fair, unfortunately. I don't think they've been around that long. But, I feel like if you do something reasonably well, you treat people with respect, they're going to come back to you. We don't have people that leave, because they're good tenants. It doesn't happen. I think that's how we've got there. So I can get you the exact numbers, but it actually went down this year, which is kind of strange, because I feel like everything else in the world is going up, but the reimbursement rate has decreased for the first time in 16 years.
All right, I'd appreciate it if you gave me the exact numbers. Are you planning on putting a lot of apartments in these buildings? Are you planning on putting all studios in one, or?
No, whatever the occupancy is, is what it stays at. We'd like to entertain that thought. There was one building that we were looking at on Main Street that did have retail on first and second floor, as Peg, I believe, we spoke about that some months ago. And it would be a special permit to put units on the second floor. And keep in mind, this building is vacant. There's no business, there's no nothing in it, it's an empty building.
318 was 328?
I think it was 328. Yeah, thank you for reminding me. And so that's the, what we, that's perfect for us, is to bring new housing stock to the municipality, not, no, sort of evict people for no reason, because we're greedy guys. Because not many people want to go through that headache of getting special permits, working with the town, you know, speaking with you all. It's, people are lazy out there, and we are not. And so I think that'd be another thing that I'd like to talk about eventually, is turning some of those second-story retail units in the city core into livable apartments. And we're not talking huge numbers. Five or six could probably get up on that, on that 328, I believe.
318 was one of the options?
Yeah, 318. I always get those confused in my head, but thank you for reminding me. That's a perfect candidate for this. And hopefully, we can do it, I'd like to. And there's a few buildings like that, in and around that block, I think would be appropriate.
And have you thought about parking?
So, we have, and we have, long story short, but there's a municipal lot behind Whitford, and there's another lot behind 318, but that is a huge factor, huge factor, particularly with the bed count. So if it's two bed or three, of course, your requirements for parking have to go up. Studio, I think it's a push. But yeah, I mean, forgiveness for that, or some sort of variance, that is an absolute factor with a reuse like that. So we've thought about it, and that takes a lot, a lot of civil engineering calculations, but that's something that is 100% day one, we need to consider, because it But that's something that is 100% day one we need to consider, because it is, it's an inhibitor in this business, unfortunately.
All right. I'm good, thank you.
Daniel, Councilor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. You mentioned that you are hoping to get retail on the first floor of some of the buildings in the core. I'm just wondering what your strategy is, or what your intentions are, or what businesses you see as being viable for coming into the downtown area on your first floors?
Yeah, so for me, the way I approach that is something, I know this is going to be somewhat sophomoric, but something you can't buy on Amazon, like a service. So, we're seeing, whether it's nails, restaurants, sort of entertainment, you know, even convenience stores, something like this, even though it might not be the most fashionable thing, but those businesses generally don't go out of business a lot. Restaurants are maybe, it's unique. But it's a service-oriented offering. It's like, you know, even a laundromat, which no one wants to hear because it's a dirty business, pun intended, but even check cashing, something like that, I wouldn't want to go down necessarily the convenience store check cashing, but something that you can't order off the internet is generally the rule of thumb of what will work out there. Food-oriented, entertainment, stuff like that. Haircut barber, we have a tattoo and a barber, and they're fantastic tenants, get plenty of foot traffic. So, it's sort of a community, self-fulfilling service, is what I like to say.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate your presentation. I like the fact that you're taking these empty units and turning them into viable units. That puts more housing out into the market. The more housing you have out in the market, the more prices will stabilize, the simple supply and demand. I think that's one of the issues that we have today in housing, is there is, there are simply not enough supply and a lot of demand, which raises, which drives up the prices.
Absolutely.
And that's really the issue we're talking about. And a lot of it, I think, does have, you don't see any real new construction in the area despite the demand. I think that has a lot to do with the overregulation of new projects, which dissuades investors. So, I appreciate what you're doing by, you know, these units are otherwise empty, and by rehabbing them, putting them out on the market. And I appreciate the fact that you're tethering this to the HUD standards, which makes it affordable for people. I think that's, those are all good things. Thank you for doing what you're doing. I would agree with you on the, what needs to be, what needs to happen with the retail downtown. You know, anything you can buy on Amazon is not going to do well down, you know, shoe store or anything else is not going to do well down there. It's not going to do well anywhere, really.
True.
So, entertainment, restaurants, artisan retail, I like to call it.
Yeah.
You know, galleries or
You're small mom and pop, absolutely correct. It's bespoke.
Unique, you know, stores that sell unique things that can't be generally found on Amazon, those will do well. But just thank you for coming and sharing your business with us. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion by councilors? I'd just like to thank you very much for tonight. I like the concept. Everybody comes into Southbridge and just wants to build low-income housing. We have an imbalance in the town of Southbridge of upper-income and middle-class income. And I think what you're going to be building is going to be catering to a little bit of everything, and especially creating a destination with some of your retail ideas. I think your investors have a better look at Southbridge. There are a lot of people that are in Southbridge. I think it's, you know, sometimes we have some people that have a poor opinion of themselves, but then there are other people in town that just have the optimism when they look around town and see all the blighted buildings are being worked on. And you buy up what I call the Rutan and, Rutan and family owned it for 100 years, and you turn around and you want to make it occupied. I'm in business, I understand how this works. You build it, you invest in it. What dictates those rates is how much you've invested and what the profit margin is. And when you go forward with these big buildings, I wish you the best of luck. And I think between the town services and our government, I think you'll have full support in moving forward. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number eight. Are there any citizens that would like to address the council on any issue that is not on the agenda tonight? Please approach the dais and state your name and address and your purpose.
My name is Zach Laverne. I live at 42 Kingsley Street. Mr. Chair, members of the town council and guests, I come before you tonight to make you aware of a very concerning matter involving our school district and the High Roads School program, the company that's been contracted to run the substantially separate programs at West Street School, Southbridge Middle School, and Southbridge Academy. On September 12th of this year, my wife and I toured the High Roads classroom at the middle school, which at the time was being offered as a placement for our daughter who just started the sixth grade. We were accompanied by Kim Fallon, the school psychologist, and Ian Cassidy, the regional director of High Roads School. During our tour, we noticed lockers just inside the entrance of the classroom. When we asked about them, the teacher, Lena Felix, told us that when students arrive in the morning, their backpacks and phones are locked up. Ms. Felix then went on to tell us that the students must remove their shoes and be scanned with a handheld metal detector before entering the classroom. I spoke with a member of the town council who told me that they were aware this was happening at Southbridge Academy, but not at the middle school. They also told me that it was a new policy this year. I later spoke to the caregiver of a student at Southbridge Academy, who told me that the students must first go through a walkthrough metal detector and then be scanned with a handheld metal detector before entering the building. Is this also the policy at West Street School? Are we doing this to our elementary, second to fifth grade students? I'll get to that in a minute. I have a child who attends Southbridge Middle School as a general education student, and they told me that they must keep their backpacks with them throughout the day, as they're not allowed to use the lockers. They also told me that they never have to remove their shoes or be scanned with a metal For those that don't know, High Roads School is considered a substantially separate setting for our students. The students in these substantially separate programs aren't bad kids. They're kids who have social and emotional and behavior difficulties, have individual education plans, and under state and federal law are guaranteed the right to a free and appropriate public education. They are also some of the most vulnerable students in our district, and subjecting them to an unjust policy that our general education students are not subjected to singles them out and is disability-based discrimination. The district's own website describes the High Roads School as a highly structured therapeutic program and a safe and supportive environment. There is absolutely nothing therapeutic or supportive about singling out students based on a disability. It is a flagrant violation of their civil rights. It desensitizes them and sets them up for the school-to-prison pipeline. I work in human services in the mental health field, and that is a very real thing. The district allowing a policy like this to be implemented is no different than allowing a policy that singles out students based on the color of their skin or sexual orientation, yet here it is. This policy cannot be allowed to continue and must be stopped immediately. The same High Roads School that our district has entrusted these students to was recently the subject of a two-year-long investigation conducted by the Connecticut Office of the Child Advocate and Disability Rights Connecticut between 2019, 2022. Their investigation found an alarmingly high frequency of restraint and seclusion, lack of required background checks on staff, inadequate teacher certification, and failure to properly implement and follow individualized education plans, among other things. This investigation has also resulted in the filing of complaints with the U.S. Department of Justice alleging disability-based discrimination, and the U.S. Office of Special Education Programs, which is part of the U.S. Department of Education. Over the last several years, we've had at least two different companies running these programs in our district. And it leaves me wondering if this is the best choice for our students or just the cheapest bid. I have reached out to Dr. Valar with my concerns and was told that the district administration would be reviewing these practices. I've also reached out to Senator Fatman and Representative Marcy and Desi. Representative Marcy got back to me and said that he had reached out to Dr. Valar, who assured him that he's taking this matter very seriously and that the school district's attorney has reviewed the policy. Yet, according to the same caregiver of a student at Southbridge Academy I spoke of earlier, the searches are still happening. These are not bad kids. They didn't choose to have disabilities, and they are in these programs through no fault of their own. Singling out a protected class of people like this is not only immoral, but is illegal and needs to stop now. These are our children, these are our students, and we must do better by them, because if this is the best we can do, it's pretty pathetic. And to get back briefly to what I said about the students at the elementary schools at West Street, just this evening, I received an email from Dr. Valar, who states that the, as he calls them, routine security screenings. This is an existing High Roads Schools requirement that all students submit to routine security screenings upon entering their High Roads School programs each day. Those screenings require all students. He does not differentiate between the Southbridge Academy, he does not differentiate between the middle school. He says all High Roads students. So, I'm very curious to know, are we searching and metal detecting our second graders, our elementary school-aged children? I wonder how they make, I wonder how that makes them feel, to be treated like criminals every day just to try to get an education. I'm the father of four children, three of whom have some pretty significant special needs, and I can tell you, every day for them is a struggle. They don't need this extra stuff put on them. This is ridiculous. And I just, I am going to keep talking to whoever I can talk to until somebody listens and somebody does something, and we get this joker out of our town and take our damn schools back. Because I'm done. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to address the council on any issues not on the agenda? If not, we're moving on to agenda item number nine, vote in assessors' transfer request of $350 from account 0011415302200, data processing, to account 001141530000, specialized services and GIS quarterly mapping maintenance invoices. Motion by senior?
Second.
Seconded by Daniel's discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This matter was discussed at the general government meeting on Thursday night, and it was unanimously recommended for approval.
Unanimously subcommittee, any further discussion? Councilor McEddy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'm just curious, why do we have to keep transferring funds for this operation? I mean, I thought it was fully funded when it was implemented.
I'll have to follow up on it.
Councilor?
I don't, I don't have my notes here. I don't, I can't recall.
All right.
Just tell me.
Back to me, I'd appreciate it, thanks.
I believe this transfer is just because of the account it had to go from data processing to specialized services. So, that's part of the cleanup with charter accounts that we had conversation today about what goes into specific buckets and try to clarify all that.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all of them favor? I'm sorry, Councilor Rivas?
Just a quick question, just curiosity. I know that the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, they also provide services around GIS mapping. Is that something that, is this something they could help with? I'm not, again, just curious.
Peggy?
Yes, if I may, through you, the only reason I'm involved is because the planning office also pays half of these bills. So, this is mapping software that we need through the town, specific to our GIS assessor's database, just like we were looking at with WPS for the properties. And we have two different contracts right now with its cartographic associates incorporated, CAI for our access GIS, and then to also maintain the database. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? None? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 10. Vote to accept, excuse me, vote to accept Massachusetts Department of Transportation Aeronautical Division grant to purchase a new John Deere 5075E 75HP tractor with cab and 12-foot bat wing mower deck to replace the 22-year-old unit that has failed. Mass DOT to fund 80% with local 20% match of $14,459.14. Local match to be funded through the capital stabilization fund. Allow the town manager to sign all related documents. No move?
Second.
Motion by senior, seconded by Daniel's discussion. That went to subcommittee?
Yes, your honor.
Go ahead, subcommittee first, then president.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This matter was discussed at the general government subcommittee meeting on Thursday and was unanimously recommended for approval.
unanimous, the subcommittee, Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. Mr. Clements, who unfortunately is out of the country right now, couldn't be here, so he does have Ron here to answer any questions. However, the conversation was, a Mass DOT is very good to us in regards to grants. This was referred through the capital improvement program, recommendation to purchase this new tractor. Mr. Clements has indicated that the old lawn mower portion itself, he'd like to declare a surplus and any monies returned back to the town. We recommend funding this through the capital stabilization fund, which we have approximately $191,563, notwithstanding the $1 million that was earmarked for the fire station in that account currently. We do have some monies that will be returned to capital stabilization. I know Councilor McEddy had asked me for the report. I will get that. Unfortunately, Dean is out on extended leave, and we're working on that together, so I have to pull those numbers. We do anticipate some other funds coming back to capital stabilization, so it should be a net zero from what we approved last year, because we have some money back from the two trucks that we purchased through DPW. So, we'll be balancing all those out in reallocation, but this is worthwhile endeavor to purchase. Thank you.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, my favorite tractor, my Coyote, 2002, pretty well wore out. One day, I was coming back from mowing a big area. On my way back to put it away, I heard a crazy noise, and I looked back and the mowers weren't turning. And called the DPW, and they took a look at it and said that it was nothing that they could fix. So, it happened that that day, we were having our annual meeting with the FAA and the state in Boston. And at the end of the meeting, I asked one of my good friends if the state had some money for equipment. And everybody started laughing because it's not uncommon for me to do that. And they said, yes, we have some money. Put in a requisition, and sure enough, they came through again. We always get a lot of help from them.
Excellent. Any questions, discussion? Councilor McEddy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First of all, you are up there running the equipment. Why are you running the equipment? Seems to me you should have somebody mowing the lawn for you.
That's just mowing the lawn. For years.
No, no, not me.
Go ahead, Councilor. Go ahead, Counsel.
Second of all, so this isn't surplus, not going to be surplus because you're saying it's failed, right?
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing tonight.
It's not going to be surplus because you're saying that it failed, correct? So what are you going to do with it? Just junk it or?
There's no manager, we'll answer that question.
Through you, Mr. Clements has gotten some quotes, at least repair it so that it will operate, it won't operate as a lawnmower, but there are some other attachments that that truck, that tractor will be able to utilize. So they'll be able to continue to use it and that way, he has to take the mower off every time he goes to mow. This way we'll have a dedicated mower and any other attachment will be attached that. So we'll get years of use out of the other attachments that we use with that piece of equipment. However, Mr. Clements would like to surplus the mower deck itself and recoup those monies out.
One, one last question. I thought the airport had its own capital stabilization.
They do not have their own capital stabilization, they have a revolving fund. So as I discussed at the general government, we try to run that account with approximately $90,000 to $100,000 in reserves, just in case we have. We had conversation about possibly taking out of that revolving, but I would hesitate to want to deplete that too much because that, that is the revolving fund that we buy fuel from and any other extraordinary expenses. So we do have some capital money, we haven't done anything really in capital outside of the fuel farm. And a lot of those things, we've allocated money and then the state and FAA has come back and said, okay, we don't need your 5% match, we'll take it all. So for, for the amount of money, it's a worthwhile cause to maintain that airfield.
All right.
Any further discussion by counselors? If not, I'd like to thank you for your service. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All of them favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you, everybody.
Just for the council, next week, the town of Southbridge is hosting the Massachusetts Airport Municipal Association down at the Wellsworth. So we're fortunate to have those individuals here, so look forward to, I've been asked to extend welcome, so look forward to that.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number 11, vote to apply for the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Action Grant. Expression of interest to access public and private dams and levees in the town of Southbridge and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork. No move? Motion by Shinja?
Second.
Seconded by Daniels. Discussion. Counsel Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This item was approved for nothing at committee.
Unanimously subcommittee, any further discussion? Counsel Martini? Counsel Rivas first. Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen.
That's fine.
Go ahead, Counsel Rivas.
Just a quick comment. It's great to see after the work that we did a couple of years ago, you know, with the community and a group of stakeholders, to see this work progressing and to, you know, have one of the projects that was discussed during that, those community discussions being implemented and I look forward to seeing the results of, of this. So, thank you.
Counsel Martini?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I was just curious exactly what work is going to be, are they going to be doing on the levees and the dams?
So they're going to assess them to see what their vulnerability is to the community. You know, we do have a number of private dams and that would, it would be taking the inventory of those dams, what condition are they in, how, just like the Brownfields grant that perhaps by getting those assessments completed through a grant process, we're then able to show private individuals to direct them to additional funding or whatever we have for additional funding. So it's a great opportunity for us to do, do this type of work.
So they're just going to assess the conditions?
Assess them.
All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all of them favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 12. Vote the acceptance of a donation of a marble bench in, from Patrick Morrell to be located on 76 Central Park, get Park and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork. No move? Second. By Shinja, seconded by Daniels. Discussion. Counsel Daniels.
This item was voted for zero to be approved and the committee wishes to express its sincere gratitude to the Morrell family for all they've contributed to the town for a number of years, over a century, and for this donation as well, something that'll last for a long, long time. Very, very grateful. So thank you to the Morrell family.
Any other discussion? If not, all of them favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 13, vote to apply for the Community First Partnership Grant and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork. No move?
Second.
Motion by Shinja, seconded by Daniels. Discussion. Counsel Daniels.
This is approved for, for zero at the subcommittee.
Unanimously subcommittee, any further discussion? Counsel Martini?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So the, what this grant is going to do, we're going to hire somebody, they're going to be in the town hall, it's going to be paid for by National Grid, a grant from National Grid, through National Grid. So what happens when the grant ends? Are we going to retain this person? I've seen that happen in the past. We have a grant, somebody's hired, and then when the grant expires, they're kept on, so...
There's no intent to retain this position, it would just be the grant-funded position.
And so this person's going to walk, go around with the inspector and he's going to advise people on weatherization and how they can improve their, their electric bills or?
So that's one possibility, to partner with the inspections department, but there's a two tiers to this, there's two, Peg can elaborate more. I think it's a great opportunity for us to, like the gentleman that was here, talking about the apartments that they purchased, this would allow those type of owners of property to perhaps use the Mass Save program through National Grid for opportunities to enhance it. We would just be that conduit to provide information and direct them to the certain programs that they would have.
So, but I'm, I'm really interested in why do we want to partner with Mass Save? There are a lot of companies out there that do these types of energy audits, so why are we specifically deciding we want to partner with Mass Saves?
It's not partnership with Mass Save, it's partnership with National Grid, that that's one of their programs. And we are an opportunity community, we, because of our economics, that this is a good fit for us at no cost to the town to provide a benefit to our residents. I'll let Peg explain more about that, but...
But I mean, I've had Mass Save come to my house. What they really is, what Mass Save is really about, and I'm going to presume that this person is going to be pushing a Mass Save, they're going to be doing an audit, which is Mass Save, and what they're really about is trying to get me to convert over to electricity, which I didn't mind, I got a rebate, took a while to get the rebate, I didn't get the benefit upfront, I had to pay the full amount, and then I got the rebate after a few months of harassing them about it. But they converted, I converted over to some electric heating and what happened is my electric bill went through the roof, where I was better off with the oil. So when your electric bill goes from about 150 to 200 a month to 500, 700 a month, and some people have told me their bills went even higher, I'm not sure if these electric units are really beneficial to residents, a very expensive operation. I've also just reading, reading some of the news reports, Mass Save isn't going to be giving out these 0% loans anymore for anybody that wants something that uses fossil fuel. They want people off of fossil fuel. So you're not going to get these loans anymore. They want to push electricity. The state is pushing electric. In fact, a contractor told me that they're not allowing new construction even to install oil burners or gas burners. So anybody that's in that business, somebody who's in the oil business or maintaining oil burners, it seems to me eventually they're just going to be out of business because if everything's going to go to electricity, that's the end of the fossil fuel industry. So I'm just not sure why we want to get involved in that. I mean, if, if somebody wants to go out and hire somebody to do a energy audit of their house, let them go out and do that, but why does the town want to get involved in it? That's really my question.
Peggy Dean?
Yes, sure. If I may through you, Chair, from community development perspective, we have a lot of substandard housing. What are some of the issues to address in the substandard housing are old windows, poor weatherization, a lot of conditions that are just, you know, a result of neglect. And I think that some of the Mass Save, what we see from some of the Mass Save in our office is, is how those things can be addressed. For instance, in our housing rehab program, we make sure that every resident we're working with for home improvements is also looking at Mass Save for potential weatherization and energy improvements. With regards to the electric, I think that the town manager mentioned how the town entered into its new aggregation contract and the electric bills should decrease because of that for those who opt in or who, those who are participating in that. And so I think there are multiple means to whatever, whatever National Grid's agenda is for electrification, our, our National Grid's agenda. With regards to our agenda, it is how do we improve our housing stock? How do we reduce energy bills where we can? I, I can't speak to why your electric bill is higher with your mini split versus your boiler in that situation. That's a conversation between you and National Grid, but what we would hope is that that energy advocate would not put someone in that situation where their energy bills are only going to be higher. We would want to see them having energy savings through whatever means get them to that end, that they would have savings on their energy bills, whether through weatherization or whether through their energy needs. And, and we didn't invite this, this, we were asked to participate in this program because National Grid sees us again as an opportunity community. They also have a future grant that they'll be opening up in a few months and that's geared more towards municipal. And so the strategy from the person who's working with us is to see us apply for both grants, this one right now, and then we'll come back to you in the future for this other one, to make it a full-time position that can work on, on everyone's behalf, businesses, residents, and the school, to try to reduce our energy costs.
And I, and if I could continue, I mean, I, I don't have a problem if somebody wants to look into this and invite somebody to come and do an audit of their house. I did it, I encourage people to do that, but why do we want to get involved in it? It seems to me, it's not really in the spirit of free enterprise. If we are going to just pick one company to do this work for people, let them go out and hire somebody to come, or it's free, let them contact somebody because I can assure you, when they come and do it, you don't get the work for free, you still have to pay for the work. So I'm not, just, my opinion, why the town wants to get involved in it, and that's just my opinion.
Peggy Dean?
Yes, I think we all, if I may through you, Chair, as we know with the utilities, these are quasi-private enterprises, right? So for instance, in our public procurement, the, the utilities are exempt as sole source providers because we have no choice but to go with National Grid in our area. And so that's why, if that makes any sense?
But National Grid, you just said are not doing, the, the, Mass Save is a conglomerate of several different companies that provide energy. National Grid is one of them, Berkshire Gas is one of them, Cape Light, Eversource, Unitil, it's, it's, to me, they're all together in this, it's not just National Grid, so, and there's plenty of other companies that do energy audits, just not sure why we want to decide who is going to do the energy audit for the town. As far as the town savings, I get it, you want to do it that way because we are going through that, but for the residents, I mean, to me, you're sort of like dictating to the residents, who, this is who we want, you, they're going to come right to your house and they're going to decide for you, that this is, we're going to decide that this is the, Mass Save is the organization that's going to do your energy audit.
Counsel Rivas?
Thank you.
So I have a few questions, either the town manager or if I could answer. One, this position, while it's grant-funded, would, would that be under sort of like the town manager? They would report or they would report to?
In conversation with Peg, they would report through Peg's office for the grant management type of, of activities, just like we're dealing with the urban forester at this time.
Okay. And then my other question around outreach, would National Grid then inform their customers that are from Southbridge that this service is available?
If I may through you, there are, there are some assumptions we have to make between now and the time where we, we learn more specifics. My presumption is that that would be part of the role of the energy advocate, is for them to say, I'm here and I'm introducing you to all the different options that I can introduce you to.
And then my last question, what is the timeline for the grant?
What the grant writer said was, this would be for January, we would be hiring in the spring potentially, that's why it would line up with the second grant, and that it is a one-year to two-year position? I don't remember, I'd have to look at the specifics.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, just tell manager, then Counsel Kelly.
And certainly to Counsel Martini's point, I don't think we're married to National Grid, it's the energy savings advocate that we're trying to direct them to programs for energy savings, because as I just stated, anybody in the town of Southbridge will be automatically enrolled with direct energy as the municipal aggregation plan unless they opt out. So National Grid will not be the provider of electricity for residents in the town of Southbridge unless they opt out and go with National Grid. That's the way the municipal aggregation plan's going to be, and they're aware of that. So I mean, it's the supplier, so they're just providing a benefit to seek energy savings.
I understand.
Yep.
Counsel Kelly?
Just a point of clarification, I believe Mass Save is a statutory program that requires utility companies to provide these energy audits. In our, in our area, since National Grid is, is the distributor, not the supplier, but necessarily, but the distributor, Matt, they run the Mass Save program. These energy audits are free and they'll come in and they'll, I've had it done, they, they'll come in, they'll tell you if you need, if they recommend doing windows or if they recommend doing insulation or whatever, you don't have to do it, it's just a recommendation. Also through Mass Save, through Mass Save, you get, you can apply for a state rebate on certain equipment upgrades. I did it in my house, I, I took out my oil system and I put in a hybrid gas-electric system and the, the, the rebates were substantial. But this is a state program, this isn't a, this isn't a National Grid program, it's a state program, Mass Save, and it's, it's, it's part of Massachusetts' effort to push everybody into more efficient energy systems other than fossil fuels. So I'm not saying that, you know, we should have somebody sitting in the town hall to, to promote or educate people about this. All I'm saying is, you know, let's be clear, this is a state program, Mass Save, an energy audit, these energy audits are free, you can probably sign up from so, from some, from some other company, some other company may, may provide an energy audit, but these are, but they may charge you for it. This is, this is a state-sponsored program that is free. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Daniels, and I'll go over to Counsel Martini.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Peg, is this an optional program?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counsel Martini?
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So yeah, you're right, this is run by the state, by the Massachusetts Department of Energy, and then National Grid charges every one of us, and it's not optional, they charge every one of us for this, to have this audit. So it's not free, I mean, we are paying for it. And then if you want to use someone else by Mass Save, besides Mass Save, you certainly can, and they will tell you, just like Mass Save does, yeah, you need this, this, and that, but you're still going to have to pay for this, this, and that. They're not giving that to you for nothing, so. It is run by the state. Sometimes I have a problem with the state always running everything and then charging me and then somebody else gets all the benefits, but I got to pay for it, but that's just, that's just me, so, thank you.
Sounds like a Republican. Peggy Dean?
Yes, if, if we can somehow channel those Mass Save funds to more Southbridge residents, if, right, if these tax dollars are being raised, if our residents can be taking advantage of it more than other communities, I think that that's a win for the town.
Absolutely. If you're paying taxes. If you're paying taxes, as long as you're paying taxes, you're right.
Any further discussion by counsel? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? One opposed.
Thank you.
Moving on to number 15, council's forum.
No, you got one though.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to hustle this along. Number 14, vote to approve the approval of amendment number two to the River Crane Street and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Chenya, seconded by Daniels. Discussion. Counselor Daniels.
This was approved four nothing at subcommittee.
Unanimous by subcommittee on a yes vote. Any further discussion? Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Although I am in favor of this, I was just wondering exactly what, why are they taking part of the oversight of the construction and then using half of that money for, for design on phase one? I was just wondering why that, if it was used, to use for design on phase two, I might, I might understand it, but, from the way I'm reading it, they're cutting back on the oversight, which you know, we always get into trouble when we cut back on oversight, that's what happened to the parking lot from Hell there, Central Street, we had no oversight, and then, things didn't go out too good. So, I'm just wondering, I, I mean, of course, I'm in favor, I think it's excellent, I'm glad River Crane's getting fixed, all the way to Pleasant Street, just wondering why BSC Group is now wants more design work on phase one, I don't, just wondering why.
Peg.
Thank you. I'll through you to the town manager.
And the memo, as it stated, we also has the Quinneborg Valley Rail Trail that's going through the same area, BSC Group is the engineer for that firm, so rather than have two costs for the same area, we're reducing it so they're going to do it concurrently with the same individual that's going to be the engineer on site, which Peg announced will be Butch Jackson, who served as our interim DPW director. So, essentially, it's, it's still oversight, they're just, they're in the same area, so rather than have it all to one, or have to charge individual, it's a combined effort that is still full-time oversight, but they're in both projects.
I know.
Allowing us to reallocate money for the further design work that needs to be done.
I know, but that's, that's my question, that is my question, why is more design needed on the phase one?
Yeah.
Other than that.
If I may, through you, Chair, yes, sure. So, in the last two months, we've cut into more of that design contract, because we were working with Dexter Russell, for instance, on a lot of additional work to abut their property, and so, that's the most obvious cause.
Okay.
We have done a lot of redesign in that area to accommodate changes that they did, and we've worked very well in partnership with Dexter Russell and Alan Pepple in regards to the project that they're doing to enhance their building for stability purposes, so it's, it's a good partnership that we've had.
And if you could do just a little bit of work on River Place there, I think Counselor Ortiz would be very happy, thank you.
River Place?
Yeah, it's a little street.
You never know, it depends on what we have, where bids come in, you know, it's, it's all about bids.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present?
Thank you.
Moving on to council's forum, Counselor Marketti.
I'm all set for tonight, thank you.
You're kidding. Counselor Daniels.
I'm all set for tonight, thank you.
Counselor Chenya.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a couple of things, I want to thank the gentlemen for bringing the school issue to us tonight, about what's going on there, but I hope you understand the frustration we have as counsel, we're always told there's nothing we can do. All I can say is, don't grease the whale, leave it squeaky and keep on going, and it will be, eventually it'll be, something will come forward. Today, I had the pleasure of attending a program, a program at the Senior Center that Katie, the Senior Center Director, put together, and it was home care, adult foster care, and I was enlightened with this is, the, what's out there for the availability of helping senior citizens and other people in our community that need adult foster care, need help, helping senior citizens such as a mother and father that can't take care of themselves no more, so they have this program. It was an excellent program, it was just a little bit disheartening that there wasn't more people there, but tomorrow, they're doing the programming for the Latino group that's there on, on Tuesdays, and I, I, I think, if you need anything like that or you need questions, please contact Katie at the Senior Center, and it's home care, adult foster care, and it's a really great program that's out there to be able to help families that their parent may be living with them, or you see them moving into the future. And it's called the Home Care Adult Foster Care, and she has all the programming, and they will be there tomorrow, and they're going to be working with the Latino group, but they'll listen to you also, and not only that, they'll help you get directions to go to Mass Health, senior programming, or insurance, also they'll direct you on that, they have a bunch of services that they do, and it's all free. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Reavis.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I have a few items. A couple weeks ago, on the 11th, I had the pleasure to join a couple other counselors at the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Southbridge Dentistry and Implants on Central Street, and I want to say it's great to see all of these new businesses coming in, and just wanted to share some of the services that they talked about, dentistry and also implants, they talked about services that they're going to be bringing online in the next, in the near future, around sleep apnea. I know those type of services are very difficult to find in our local area, and so I wanted to share that with our community, and to check them out, they are on Facebook, and, again, they're right in our downtown area, and so, we look forward to the services that they're going to provide for our community, they're, they also do braces, oral surgery right in-house, and, again, services that are not easy to find locally. I also attended the spooky market at 12 Crane Street, and it was exciting to see the dark horse, you know, for those who had frequented the dark horse before, it, it closed down for a bit, and so, seeing some activity in that building, and seeing all of the artisans that were, you know, selling their, their goods there, I got kind of a painting of, of Southbridge from the, you know, 1900s, and it was wonderful to, to get, and I have that on my desk, so, thank you. One of the vendors was a La Puri, so, thank you so much. I also wanted to talk a little bit about, add to what the town manager said around the Substance Abuse Task Force and this week being Red Ribbon Week. We are going to be at UMass Memorial Health at Harrington Trunk Retreat event on Friday the 25th, from 4:00 to 6:00, so we will have representatives from the task force there in sort of supporting that event in our, in our community for families, and, you know, we're looking forward to more of the work that we've been doing on the task force with the town manager, and helping, you know, vulnerable citizens in our community, and helping all, all sectors and all different people in our community. Housing, since that was such a big topic earlier, I want to share the Southbridge Community Workshops on housing that are going to be presented at Jacob Edwards Library on October 24th, from 6:00 to 7:30, and then, there will be two workshops at the Community Center on November 12th, one in Spanish from 10:00 to 11:15 a.m., and one in English from 11:30 to 1:00 p.m., and again, that's at the Senior Center on Chestnut Street, and, you know, they're going to be talking about local housing issues and identifying strategies to meet the town's diverse housing needs, really important for people to participate and try to make some of these workshops that are going to be in our community to, you know, make your voices heard on this big issue of housing. I also wanted to bring attention to, I go to a lot of different coalitions and a lot of different meetings around the state, and I was sent this information about the Mass Food Trust, Healthy Food Financing, that could benefit some of our, our local grocery store and our local convenience stores. It is a program about healthy eating and finding healthy, affordable food, so the Mass, I want to get, Mass Food Trust Program provides loans, grants, and business assistance for increasing access to healthy, affordable food in low-income and underserved areas. They provide low-cost, up to $300,000, small grants of up to $25,000, and business assistance to help grocery, corner stores, food co-ops, ethnic markets, farmers' markets, farm stands, and mobile markets purchase, real estate, renovate their facilities, buy new equipment, and plan for growth. To get more information, you can email Hannah Sobel, hannahs@fccdc.org, or call 413-774-7204, and I will be visiting some of the smaller grocery stores to share this information with them, in Spanish and English, so they do have this information on their website in both languages, so, that, I think that wraps up everything I have, thank you.
Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First of all, I want to encourage all those registered voters out there to go out and vote, early voting is open, as the town, as the town manager indicated earlier. There are a lot of important questions on the ballot that are, that everybody should be interested in, and there are, in addition to the presidential election, there are several other elections for statewide office, or for state offices that, that are also very important, so I encourage everybody to get out there and vote. I also would like to echo Counselor Chenya's comments earlier to Mr. Laverne, and do thank you for coming to the meeting today and bringing this to our attention, it is extremely frustrating for us as counselors that it's very difficult to get information out of the school system. Unfortunately, receivership has had the consequence of basically disempowering the school committee and disenfranchising the voters in this town, so it's important to keep on speaking up, and hopefully, at some point in time, we will get this all behind us. I also am appreciative of your comments concerning the school-to-prison pipeline. I'm a, I'm a defense attorney, a public defender, I can tell you that probably 90% of my clients do not have high school educations, will have completed high school for one reason or another, a lot of that is disability-related, and I think the statistics bear it out, that without that high school diploma, without getting a good education behind you, the chances of winding up in the criminal justice system are exponentially higher, so I do appreciate you bringing this issue to our attention. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, well said. Moving on to agenda item number 16, discussion of next meeting date, I would just like to remind the council, we have a joint meeting with the school committee on the 28th, 6:00 p.m., and our next council meeting will be 11:424 at 7:00 p.m. in the Southbridge, in the council chambers. Moving on to agenda item number 17, adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Move meetings adjourned.